Good afternoon, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started and call this meeting to order. Thank you, board colleagues, for joining us today. Dr. Stubblefield, staff, and any guests that we have in person or online. Thanks for joining us today. We'll call this meeting to order. It is July 31st, 2024, Wednesday at 1:32 PM. We do it every board meeting. I will read our board norms and protocols. The board, we agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine if we're following our norms when conducting district business. Again, thank you for joining us, everyone, and we'll get started with roll call from Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark. Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, present.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, present.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve today's special agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion on the agenda? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark. Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Now, to entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under coma, to include Mr. Gohean, Dr. Stubblefield, Mr. Lilly, and Dr. Campbell for five minutes going in at 1:36.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark. Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The only reason I'm saying not this week is because they're at a fair today. New teachers came back today, and HR is like, so Dr. Jones is not, like, there with staffs. So if we can get it this Friday, we will, but we for certain can give it to you next Friday.
Well, I would just like as soon as possible, because I think we need to know, to kind of know what we're kind of up against. I'm not trying to put any undue stress on them, but we need to know. I think somebody has an idea of what's going on and what we have and what we don't have. So I would just like to know. I don't know about anybody else, but I think we need to know.
We'll provide the update. Thank you.
Did you have a second question, Ms. Page?
Well, I kind of moved them. I just wanted to know what the classified, certified, especially the nurses, because we want to make sure that there's somebody in every building that can help our kids if a problem arises.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Russell?
I was just gonna piggyback and just, could we, I know that we're talking about specific positions, certified, classified, and nurses, but could we also just get a glimpse of what kind of building-wide, where I believe, like, three years, four years ago, they used to do like, oh, we're 100% fully staffed, or just building level around how we're doing overall. That would be greatly appreciated as well.
Great, thank you. Additional questions?
There is one more thing, because I got a phone call from a lady who, and I know the Human Resource Department is busy. I know they're working, but there ought to be somebody to answer the phone. She swears she's called and called and called, and she can't get anybody. And she wants an explanation about classified in terms of the pay scale. She's having some misunderstanding on some things. And it ought to be somebody, because when you dial the number, they don't always hit every department, and it's not always an operator there to connect you to somebody else. So that, to me, is still a problem.
Yeah. If you can give us her name, we'll follow up, because we do have Ms. Pam, who is the HR person. The only line she's responsible for is HR. And then we have the staff out front when it rolls. So if you can give us the name and we can figure out what line she's calling, they can follow up with her. So if you send it to Dr. Jones, and you can copy Ms. Middleton on that, they can reach out to her.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, board. Next on our agenda is item number four, board. This is a board discussion or just informational information that was being brought back from our last conversation regarding the, excuse me, sorry, the thought exchange that's out in the community. It is still open for community members to participate if they would so choose. I believe it closes tomorrow, but today, we're going to get an update as requested regarding the data, the results as of or so far on the thought exchange and information on the Community Vision Team conversation that took place last night as well, and then open up for questions. So I'll pass it on to Dr. Stubblefield and Mr. Birch, who are ready to present.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Birch is going to project the slide deck so those individuals in the audience can see what I'm referring to. What I'll share with you is the updated version from what was shared with the Community Vision Team last night, high-level overview. And then I will share with you, there was an opportunity for community members to put their thoughts in so that we can present it to the full board from last night as well, and I'll explain both of them. So we can start with this. You can go to the next slide. So this survey last night, this is what we shared with the Community Vision Team, that that was our purpose, but the purpose today is really for you all to actually get the information, so you can go to the next slide. So we always like to start all of our conversations around our North Star. Anytime we're bringing information to the board or to the community, we want to remind them of our district strategic framework, and also that what our North Star is, which is by 2031, 100% of our students will graduate with a diploma plus while meeting or exceeding the state graduation average. This just is a reminder of what are the drivers in our systems around all of our academic and SEL components in our system. And so it is driven by the goals that you have established, the KISA accreditation process, the district strategic plan, the multi-tier system of support is how we make sure that we're meeting the individual needs of all students, and then the school improvement plans. This is what we also like to share to show you where we are with our trajectory around graduating with a diploma plus. For the class of 2024, our target was 70%, and we exceeded that, and 77% of our students graduated. So we monitor that every year, and we do updates throughout the year. But for this year, you will hear them referring to the 77%. If you see our target for this current class, class of 2025, would be the 75%. So since we've exceeded that, we'll adjust it, but we'll just keep adding the line so you can see where we exceeded. You can go to the next slide. So this slide just shows you, which I'm going to have to look at it here, because I don't have my glasses, the number of people who actually participated in the survey. As of, Edwin, did you update this this morning or use the same numbers from yesterday? So this is as of yesterday at 3:30. Once it closes, we'll provide and add to this discussion item an updated number of the final number. So the first question that we asked was, do your children, do you have children attending school in KC KPS? And as of yesterday at 3:30, 54%, 1,202 individuals said yes, and 1,039 individuals said no. Then we asked if you said yes, and 2,145 people responded to this. What was the breakdown of the schools that they attend? And you, I'm not going to go through that because it's available. We have representation from every school. The schools that had the most, you would see would be Wyandotte, Sumner. There were some of our high schools, which makes sense, they're larger. So individuals could pick more than one school if they had kids in multiple schools. And now I'm jumping to slide, the participation breakdown. It said, if you said no, which area do you reside in? And that gives you information about where individuals who don't have children in the schools, where they live, in the largest areas again, were Wyandotte, Washington, and J.C. Harmon, with the percentage of people in those areas. The next slide, the first question on the survey regarding the bond was, would you support a bond for $180 million with no increase in mill levy? Your taxes would be the same of whatever you were assessed to pay this year to include new construction for the following projects, Central Middle School, Argentine Middle School, Silver City, and Nova Apprentice becoming one on the Nova Apprentice site and addressing the Sumner Academy by adding additional classrooms and removing the modular units. 59%, 1,232 individuals said yes. 16%, which was 330 individuals, said no, and 25%, 531 individuals were undecided. If you go to the next question, which was, would you support a bond for $260 million with a two-mill levy increase? Taxes would increase by $34.50 per year on a home valued at $150,000 to include the projects that I mentioned previously, as well as new construction for Eugene Ware and Lindbergh Elementary becoming one on Eugene Ware's site, Emerson New Stanley becoming one on the Emerson site, and classroom additions that will be removing the modular mobile units at Emmy Pearson and Whittier. And with that one, fewer people said yes. 42% of those who answered the question, 851 people said yes. 32%, which is 639 people, said no, and 26%, 535 people, said they were undecided. And if you were to go back and add the numbers up, everybody did not, there were more people who answered the first question than the second question, and the survey allowed that. It didn't force you to answer both of them, but this is just the results of that. And then it gives you, it asks the questions, are there any projects not included that should be considered and added to the list? The one with the largest percentage was special education improvements. 542 people, 37% said that. Deferred maintenance repairs, 465 people said that. And then accessibility improvements was the next one, which 426 people, 29%. And when you scroll to the next one, furniture and technology also was at 30%, which was 437. We did send, and it's attached and it's public, anybody, if you go to the board meeting, we also included a document with all of the comments that people made. Just for the sake of time to give you discussion, that is all public, and the comments range from, we should not be asking taxpayers for any amount of money to support schools, we should be doing more. So the comments was a wide range of comments. You have access to those. When we looked at it, there was no comments in there that was identifiable or had profound profanity, so we just exported exactly what was in there, and you'll see some single words and that kind of thing, but that was the exact results. Before you begin your discussion, I do want to share, we did meet with, it was probably about 25 to 30 community members last night to share these results, and they also had an opportunity, Edwin, if you can show the Community Vision Team one. They had an opportunity so that the board members who weren't present or you'll have a point of reference. They had an opportunity to participate in a summary. I will say this, that when I looked at this, there were a lot of people who had a perspective that wasn't overwhelmingly supportive or just didn't flat-out support it. That was not, they did not enter it into the document. So I don't want to give the false pretense, like when you look at this, that it was overwhelmingly positive. It was probably a balanced perspectives based off the people who showed up, but some individuals did not choose to capture that. So I just want to say that when you're looking at it, I don't want to give this false pretense that the individuals who were there, several of you were there and you heard firsthand. Some people just didn't enter it. So when you look at this, I provided the word cloud because based off of the individual thoughts, it pulls the words that came up the most, and learning, equity, community, spending were, when you look at the big words, those were the words that jumped out. The key thoughts, you can see there were, schools are important for the benefit of students. 12 people ranked, that was the highest-ranked thought. This is an equity issue and a safety issue. Our students deserve this, and the district is responsible for providing safe and equitable learning spaces. Equity and safety for, that theme was more equity and safety for our student and staff. And they should be asking for more money was another comment. And then the key word by themes are there. And again, the key words by theme, it shows you that, but then it gives you like some general thoughts that came out of that. It was, this is an equity issue with safety and safety issues. Our district desperately needs to improve. Teaching and learning look different than they did years ago. Our schools are not equipped. Very supportive, yes, very supportive. And then the thoughts, and you can read through there. I will jump down to like the differences. That last slide, Edwin, that shows A and B rated, because what this tool is able to do is to pull it, and that's why I said from the beginning, like, looking at this, it is not fully representative of the thoughts that were shared in the space. Some of the thoughts that were shared in the space that were not captured here were around, we should not be increasing taxes until we address the academic issue. until we address the academic issue. We really, taxpayers, because of the way the tax structure is created, I'm paraphrasing, they're being overtaxed by all of the taxing entities. And people are at risk of losing their homes. Some people have lost their homes. Those thoughts were shared as well, but they were not, those individuals didn't put them into the thought exchange. And we did not enter those. Everybody had the opportunity. So I just wanted to give that caveat around that.
No, I was just gonna say, some of the people didn't know how to do it. So if you want them to put it in, you need somebody at the table to help them put that information in.
So as people came in, staff did offer to support them. There were some people said, no, I'm just going to speak. Like as people came in, there were staff going around to the tables, offering the assistance. Now, as the meeting went on and some came in later, I'm not saying necessarily that everybody had that opportunity, but we did say that and then the reminder. So we, that's why I'm saying this. This, this is just a piece of data. It is not saying this is what the people said. And I think four or five of you were actually there and you heard firsthand. So you have that information as well. Those types of thoughts are captured in the comments on the other one. I just didn't want that to be like a misunderstanding.
I don't know, I appreciate you saying that, but for future reference, you had the technology. Maybe people, some people can't do that piece. So is there an opportunity to present a sheet where they can write down their ideas and someone else could scribe that in to make sure we capture everything?
Yep, we will take, take that feedback and address it in the future. So those are both of the pieces of information. We also provide it for you as you start this discussion. The cost of escalation, if you, with the different timelines from if you, what it was when we presented it back in the spring to escalation, if you choose to, if you were to consider going forward with the bond for November, if you choose April of 2025, if you were to choose August of 2025 or November of 2025. So you can see what the potential escalation may be. And these are all estimates based on the market and can change based off of what happens with the market. We, and in that document, we also included like the other projects that were, and what their cost was. And then what the mill levy, the, what you can get from the mill levy at from zero to five. And then depending on what date you may want, what would need to be done with the earliest timeline in November. Not saying you will do November, but this is what you would need. Like with the timeline, and that timeline would just shift for each one based on the dates around that. So that is all the information that, we also included like what it would cost taxpayers as well, that document as a reference. And again, all of these documents are part of the board agenda and they are public, everybody can see them. So with that, I will yield the mic to whomever. And if we need to answer questions, staff is here to answer questions.
Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. Thank you, staff. And again, thank you to everybody who participated in the survey, the thought exchange, and who came out last night and whether they used the survey, the thought exchange or verbally spoke at the meeting last night. I just wanna say thank you to everybody who participated. It's great to hear the feedback so that we can make the most informed decision as a board as we can. So I'll open the floor to the board for discussion. Board, we don't necessarily have to make any decisions today. Today, it's really just to ask questions based on the information that was provided. Again, the thought exchange is still open. It will remain open through tomorrow, is that correct?
Yes, the thought exchange will remain open till tomorrow, I believe at eleven fifty-nine PM.
Great, thank you. So folks still have an opportunity to go in, if you haven't yet, to share your thoughts and to express your thoughts in the thought exchange. So I'll open the floor.
And I can say, if the board is like, leave it open another week, we can leave it open in another week. Like we can adjust, the deadline is completely up to you. We, you can always go in and give real-time results as to where we are.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. The first is a, of the survey. There is a filter for having students in the district and not having students. Is there a filter for staff?
We didn't ask that particular question, no.
Is there a filter for, I mean, I know you didn't. So I'm establishing, I'm asking you and establishing point same time. So is there a filter for USD five hundred residents?
No. The, what we were linking to that is, do your students, it doesn't say, are you a USD five, but based off the number who participated, you can work backwards. If you have students in the district or if you live in this attendance area, all of those individuals would be USD five hundred. But we didn't ask that question.
You don't know, you don't have verification. Because you have forty-four percent of non-applicable, whatever that means.
Right, but if you look for, at the numbers and the percentage of which area do you reside in?
Right.
And you don't have children, that kinda closes the gap on that.
You would think.
Yeah, yes.
But it's not verified. And therefore then, do you have, you don't have a filter? I mean, I'm saying yes, I know the answer is no. You don't have a filter for people who are registered to vote in USD five hundred?
No, we did not ask that question.
So, so taking that consideration, these are the numbers, whatever the numbers are.
Correct.
And then when it says, I guess that, one of the questions that is, of the other needs, I guess, what would be technology needs? If, are we not one-to-one for every student?
Yeah, so that's one form of technology. But as it was shared in the space, when you go to some of our schools and what our classrooms look like, they're not necessarily equipped with large TV monitors, those kind of things. So there's other types of technology that when you go to more, in different school systems, you just see different. It's not just computers. So computers were good. It is talking about the facilities and what's available from a technology standpoint within our schools and in our classrooms.
COVID money spent a lot on monitors and TVs and things, correct?
Apple TVs were placed in most classrooms, correct? I'm looking at Mr. Hoda. In every classroom. So Apple TVs were placed in every classroom, but every classroom doesn't necessarily have a monitor. Is that correct, Mr. Ordodaya, all have them? They have a projector or monitor. So depending on the building, and like that's one sort of technology, but there's technology advancements that exist and actually in some of the spaces in some of our buildings, but it's not equitable across all buildings.
And technology moves faster than the speed of light.
Right.
Speed of thought, excuse me. And then I guess the one other question is that however we keep it, however long we keep it open, was this about a two-week window?
Yes, it opened on July seventeenth.
So are we having plans? I would like to see an in-person meeting. When can we schedule an in-person meeting?
An in-person meeting.
In-person meeting.
We will do, at the direction of the board, we were not directed.
Okay, so I'm asking the board, we should, if we're gonna make a decision, one would not, I don't think two weeks is adequate. You can spread it out. And again, not all people have access to technology. So I'm requesting we have a in-person meeting before we make a decision. Do, would you like to make it an emotion, Mr. President?
That is completely up to you. I would just say, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. I'll open for discussion. I'll just say that for the last year and a half, we've had several in-person meetings through our community vision team, our facilities team, our boundary team. There have been several opportunities for people to engage. And that's where we came up with the last bond proposal for four hundred and twenty million. So to say that we haven't had an opportunity for in-person meetings, and last night's meeting was also an in-person meeting for people to come and express their viewpoints as well. So I think we have had several opportunities for.
Same for this bond.
And I'll, as I said, I think we've had several opportunities for in-person meetings, not say that we shouldn't have or continue to have them. But I do just want to recognize that folks have spent time and have committed and have come to in-person meetings over the last year and a half while we've gone through this process.
I have a question. With Dr. Nguyen, you heard requests or proposal for another continuing purpose meeting. What do we, my question is, this is me asking, what more will we gain by continuing to having more in-person meeting when it's already been established what we're meeting for? When we looking at Central Middle, I'm gonna have to go through Argentine, what's needed, technology. Reason why I'm asking that, if we seem like we continue to have in purpose meeting, we're gonna keep going over reasons why we shouldn't do this or approve it. And it's just gonna extend the timeframe to get it out there to see, should we go forward? That's my opinion.
Would you like me to answer?
Yes.
Number one, if you've looked at the agenda, and correct me, Mr. President, are we having a, I won't say a vote, a discussion the next board meeting?
According to the timeline, if we want to get this on a November ballot, the board would have to make a decision by August thirteenth.
Correct. So that's one answer, August thirteenth. The second answer is that this is a new bond proposal. And that's why I said, I didn't say we had not met in person. I'm saying, here's a new bond proposal, second answer. And third answer, as respectful as I can say, if you want it to pass, one would think you wouldn't have a problem with having another in-person, a in-person, and in-person meeting for this bond proposal. There's three answers for you.
Ms. Russell.
So I'm not in agreement with the current motion. And I'm not disagreeing that another, it is a revised proposal. However, where I would like to see us put our energy is us making a decision around one eighty and two sixty. And then we put our energy around having an in-person meeting with whatever direction the board has chose. So if we pick one eighty or we pick two sixty, then we're going back out to the community and saying, on November and whatever date, this is the option that you have. Because right now, we're still in this place where we haven't made a decision. And so we're having an in-person meeting for two options. And I respectfully will say, there's a lot more data survey points in this one than there was in the other one previously that we had just based on the two-week timeframe. So I'm not opposed to extending the survey deadline. I think we should close it at least a week before our board meeting so we can have that data. But I think the other thing I'm also hearing is technology is an issue. So extending the survey doesn't help the technology issue. But I think we need to make a decision on one eighty or two sixty and then we put our energy into gaining community support and informing and educating people about what it is we're doing. So that's kinda, I also think, given the timeline, if we make a motion today to have an in-person meeting before our August thirteenth guideline, the amount of administrative burden it's also putting on our staff as we're starting the school year, so.
If I remember last meeting, there wasn't a problem with starting, doing things before the school year.
But that was two weeks ago at a meeting versus, that's for, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean.
I understand. I think you understand.
Additional questions, discussion?
I would like to see us have a meeting. Because only a few people were there at that meeting yesterday. And I know, I just wanna make sure we hear from the public. Because there's still that issue, there's that divide on the tax thing. And I just wanna hear from the people. And I'm not saying, again, I think people have the right to state their opinion. And if, you know, some people were against raising the taxes. I know we're selling that it's not gonna go up, but it will go up the following years. And I think we need to be honest about that. But I think we need to hear from everybody, not just that small little group that's picked. Give the people a chance to express themselves. I'm not saying they weren't, this is a new deal. Present it, let's hear from them, and then we go from there.
One clarification I'll just say is that if people's taxes are, where this, the proposal, at least the one eighty proposal, is not increasing the mill levy. So people's taxes are going up because their valuation of their homes are going up. We don't control that. So I just wanna be clear that the proposal for the one eighty at least is not increasing any mills to people's taxes. So our, our mill levy rate is not increasing. So I just wanna make sure that there's that clarity as well.
Okay, but then I got a question. Didn't we just recently vote to increase the mill levy?
No, ma'am.
No, it's one or the other, but it's gonna go up. I mean, we just have to be honest. That is gonna go up.
But that's, what I'm saying is, we don't control that portion of it.
I get that part, but it's still gonna go up. And that's where we need to be honest and make sure that people understand. Don't think you're not gonna see any kind of tax increase, you will.
But I wanna be clear.
When I look at my property tax, it did go up.
But if we choose to do something and we don't choose to do something, the risk that your taxes still go up is an economic situation. It has nothing to do with the decision that we would make. If we said no tax increase, your taxes, that mill levy cost is gonna go up regardless whether or not.
But you need to be careful when you say that, because some people take you literally. That's why, all I'm saying, be careful how you, you set it up. Because if you say no, and it did, and I'm looking, what, it looks like it went up.
So the school.
I just said, be careful how you phrase it.
But what I just wanna say, like in layman's terms. So the school district doesn't currently have a bond. When people look at their taxes and the valuations went up from last year to this year, if you look, we didn't have a bond, but it still went up because the valuations and the appraisal process.
I'm not crazy, I get that, I hear what you're saying.
There's no direct correlation.
But it is gonna go up eventually.
We can talk about taxes all day. We don't, we can't control that, they're gonna go up, they're gonna keep going up, twenty-five, they're gonna go up twenty-six. That's something we cannot control. We're dealing with an issue here. And I know, Ms. Page, you talking about we're gonna get everybody. We, you're never gonna get everybody, I'm listening to what you're saying.
I didn't say we were getting everybody, be clear. I just said, we wanna open it up so that more people can have a say.
Still, some people really don't care. Reason why I'm saying this, they're not gonna come. You can have a meeting every week, in my opinion. Some folk ain't gonna show. You can have a meeting next week, they're not gonna show. Next month, they're not gonna show. They can say, what, you know, whatever. If we look at this, this twelve thirty-two that was taking this survey, yes. Three thirty, no. The numbers will be for you all, the numbers don't lie unless somebody error in their type of typing. And it says five thirty, one undecided. You're gonna continue to have a great number of people undecided. That's those people that don't care. If you look at the turnout on this last bond issue, of the five thousand people that voted, twenty-two hundred, yes, whatever it is, you're, don't quote me on the numbers, twenty-nine, I mean, twenty-two, yes, twenty-nine, no, and how many people? That was a low turnout. Do folks really care?
But that's not fair for you to say that, that they don't, no, no, you can't say.
That's my opinion.
But I respect your opinion. But I'm saying, they do care, but the people who live here because they're tired of being lied to. I didn't say people here lied to, so make sure you clarify that. But if you live in this area and you see what's going around here, I can see why people are discouraged. I have been calling people, and they said, well, what are you gonna do? They haven't done anything, they're not trying to help us. So it's not because they don't, there may be a few who don't care. The majority do, but they are not satisfied with what's going on around here. And you know that, people have said it.
I had ones of people said they forgot, even folk in my family forgot they were, we were voting on this. So that means it was not important.
But you said they don't care, that's not true. That's not, unless you surveyed, you went to every household. But we don't have to debate it, we'll see.
If you care, you can put, you can put. If you care, you can put, you can put things in here that go off and remind you, this is the day to do this, or write it down, and.
Yeah.
Anyway, we're still, we are paying for a bond. Remember, we have 22 years left, I think, on the current bond, correct?
Yeah, we still have a bond outstanding.
We may have a current bond, but that's not, that's not the reason why the taxes are going up.
No, 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 you just said, we don't have a bond.
Well, I'm saying, like, we didn't add, I was implying that we didn't add another bond last year, yet the taxes went up. And so, there's no direct correlation that, oh, you said a no-tax, a no-mill levy bond, that's why my taxes went up. No, that's just the economics of how taxes work.
Correct. How we can control it is how we, what we do with the budget. So yes, we can control the.
But Ms. Dr. Nguyen, you also know that the portion of the budget that we can use for capital outlay projects is $8 million, correct?
Correct.
And none of the bond projects underneath that, we can do any of the projects with $8 million, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we have to have, so what is our other solution?
I'm not, I'm not working out the math at this point, I'm just saying, correct your statements.
There is not a math problem.
No, no, it sure isn't a math problem.
It's not a math problem. You can't do $60 million worth of work with $8 million. That is not a math problem.
The point is, the taxes will go up. No one disputes that. It's the manner in which and the message you deliver to the taxpayer. That's what I'm saying.
And the taxpayers also said they didn't.
I didn't interrupt you, I think.
You did, but it's okay.
It's okay. But that, when you said, we don't have a bond, that was what I was, the point I was asking you to clarify. We have the bond that we're paying on from 2016, okay? And that's the message you're saying with no increase, because it would hopefully stay at that level. That has to be explained to people, because then, when then, as we all know, the valuation does go up, that we did not have input in, it filters out as then an increase. So we all know how it's, how it's, how it's done. Perhaps the taxpayer does not, and I'm just saying, if you want to win, be clear. Now, and I'm not saying that we're, and I'll correct again, Mr. Lopez, I didn't say we didn't have meetings last. I said, this is a new bond, you're going to take, even extend it a month, you're going to take this, these numbers, and hopefully they triple and quadruple. So, you know, and when we do on August 13, whatever the numbers are, then we have that discussion. So that was the reason for the motion, and you either voted up or down.
Dr. Nguyen, would you support $180 million no-mill levy increased tax?
I'm not going to answer that question. That's not the motion on the floor.
Do you, do you believe that?
Point of order.
Do you believe that facilities?
You don't ask a person how to vote.
I'm not asking you how to vote, Dr. Nguyen, I was, I'm curious what you would support.
Didn't you say, would you support?
I'm curious, you know the needs in our district with our facilities and our infrastructure, and I just want to see what other options we have. There's an option on the table.
Is there a question there?
There's an option for a no-mill levy increased tax. I'm wondering if there are other options that the board would like to put forward that's not in front of us currently.
Well, you sure don't think of something from the hip, talking about an option with the need you just established. But I'll ask for a point of order. Mr. Goheen?
I know you've got a discussion going on about the motion to, if I understood the motion correctly, to hold an in-person meeting before moving forward on the.
Actually, before August 13, because that's on the, let's be specific.
Before August 13.
Question, we talking about one more meeting or two meetings? See, we're going to keep having, how many meetings?
Okay, but the motion is on the floor. She asked for a point of order. Mr. Goheen?
As the maker of the motion, he was asking for clarification on the motion. So were you asking for one, or were you asking for two?
He's asking for, what?
I think, I think she's referring to Barbara Mylan's question, is, are you asking for one meeting or two meetings? That's his question. But the point of order.
You didn't clarify.
Yeah, I know. The point of order, I was just trying to get clarification, that's the motion that's in front, so the discussion has to relate to the motion that's at issue, which relates to whether or not you guys want to hold an in-person meeting to discuss, or in-person meeting not to discuss, in-person meeting for the public, as I understand it, for August 13, concerning the.
Feedback.
Feedback or the options for the use of the bond funds. So I think that's, the questioning, discussion has to relate to that.
If you want an answer, I would only, you want an answer, time would only reflect.
Sorry, I was too far back from the mic. Apologize.
I don't have a problem with one more meeting. I'm just, just to keep, you know, to see, keep presenting it. You were correct, this is 180, a new one. Get it out there as much as you can, but just to keep repetitive, we just keep having a meeting, where folks understand what we're trying to do. See, this thing, what we're trying to do, we're trying to do what the, what it says we're trying to do with the schools. You're unfit, need to be prepared. Doesn't come free, we need new buildings. Let's go with it and see where we go. Explain it to the folk, get it out there, ain't going to cost you arm or the leg, ain't going to cost you a new car, ain't going to cost you a new home. This is what I meant. It has to be done, it's not going to be free. Taxes going to go up, not, I control, in the state, in the county, in the city, it's going to go up, y'all. Eggs going up, bacon going up, this is just me talking. This is needed. I'm done.
I'm curious, Dr. Stubblefield, from a staff component or staff time, if we're looking at a meeting before August 13, we're likely looking at next week between the 5th and the 9th. What would it take to pull together, logistically, another meeting?
So, honestly, we could organize another meeting. We just would have to work with the schools, because with the back-to-school stuff, some of them maybe have an evening event, if we, we can hold it here. If we know, we would, I would just look at my calendar and staff calendar. If it's not a board meeting, we wouldn't necessarily check you all's availability. I would just want to be clear on what information we would be sharing, gathering, or that. But we can make it happen.
Ms. Clark?
Communicate it out, if it was necessary. Just clarity on what we would be sharing, if it's what we.
I would say the same thing that your survey asked.
Okay, yeah, I just, yeah.
One wouldn't think that you would have other questions that you didn't offer these people, so you would offer the same questions. You know, you want to be fair about it.
Correct. I just, like, I didn't want to make an assumption.
Right, and that you wouldn't want to, but you would be available for clarification.
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
I think my question was just answered, because every time we come back, it's like, well, did you ask this, and did you do that, and what did you do about this? So that's exactly what I wanted to understand. The questions that we've been asking, are they significant enough for us to be able to come back and make a decision at that point? To Dr. Mylan's point of all the meetings, like, if we're not getting what we need from the meetings, those that feel like we're not getting what we need from the meetings, please, please, please let us know what it is that we're missing, because some of us are content with moving forward, but we have some that are not. So what are we missing? What information needs to be added if this is our last meeting?
I think from a data collection standpoint, I'm also just thinking, so we're asking the same questions, are we collect, is the intent to collect the data from that meeting and enter it into the same?
I would think we would.
Okay. And so, is that an administrative burden that we're, or is that an administrative burden, is not the word I wanted to use, task, that we're putting on our board secretary, because it's a request of the board, or is that a request we're putting on our staff? I just want to clarify.
Whoever inputs the data, would input the data and provide it to us. So that's, that's not our determination.
So, I guess.
Our organization here.
We can't, we can determine it, and so I think if, if the request comes from the board, I think we're saying the board clerk is going to be the one that takes the data, unless someone has a different opinion, and she's creating that document on her own.
This document would be the same document used.
Well, I think, my opinion is, you don't want to, I, I think this is self-reported data versus data that someone else is collecting. And I would personally like to keep those two data points separate, verse, so looking at the self-reported data and then looking at the data that an individual takes and enters into something is two different things.
Now, you can, if, you can be as creative as you want to be. Let's say you have 1,000 people show up, you can have 1,000 laptops and ask them to input it. So however is meaningful, and whatever, but, but.
Because I think in a meeting setting.
Don't continue to, in my opinion, please, ask the questions, make it impossible to do. It is not impossible to do, but, and again, however is reliable, fair, you collect data to be reliable and fair.
And I agree, and I think in a meeting where someone is, there are multiple people talking, I think it is hard, so if everyone, there's only 20 people in this room, if everyone in this room starts talking, and we want to use this as a data collection point, that means I need to have every single person with a pencil and paper, or I need, yes, because the argument was technology, so I don't want us to have technology if that's the argument.
I didn't say, you know, whatever you have at that meeting, again, I'll say, however it is, to make it fair and reliable.
Okay.
So the motion on the floor is to hold one more meeting before the August 13 meeting. If there are no other further discussion.
To have an in-person meeting.
In-person, thank you. In-person meeting before the August 13 board meeting. If there's no further clarification on that, we'll go ahead and call the vote and have Ms. Smith do a roll call.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, no, I'm not in support of having another in-person meeting.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, no.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.?
Mylan Jr., no.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you.
Can I just have a question? Dr. Stubblefield, was last night's meeting an open meeting by invitation?
Last night's meeting, the community vision team was made up of representatives that the board recommended last fall, and then you had.
I mean, I know the composition of the, was it open or was it by invitation?
Yes, but we did say, we invited people, but it was an open meeting. So if somebody reached out, if they asked, could they come, we said they can come, but in order to ensure that we had multiple perspectives, we asked you all to share that names with us, so we invited specifically.
Correct, and no one would have been turned away at the door.
Yeah, no.
But, on social media, there was the communication that it was invite-only, and that's why I asked, because I knew the answer, I did not submit any response, but, but again, it, no one was going to say, show the pass and turn you away, but, thank you.
Additional questions? I'm sorry, Ms. Russell.
No, you're fine. So I just had a few questions or thoughts, if it's the will of the board. Could we, the consensus, could we consens, that's not the word, could we put, group together like comments on the other document? It's 12 full pages, and I know some of them are repetitive, some of them are, you could group them together. I believe we've done this exercise with another document, both for board conversation.
Was the title of the document you're referencing?
It's called Other, it's parentheses, Other Revised Bond Project Responses From Thought Exchange. Just so that there's a tangible way to say, out of however many responses, this many people put this in the other, I could do it myself, but there may be behind Thought Exchange a way to put those things together. That is one request or ask, if that's okay with everyone. And then, the other comment is, we did survey people, and so what more can we do with the survey data? I have no objections to what is currently being proposed in both the 180 and the 260, but I think because we have the data, I'm wondering how we could utilize this data when we're, I believe we're going to have a facilities master plan update in the coming months. But also, we saw the prioritization, or the, or not the points, the most votes for furniture slash technology sped improvements and deferred maintenance, and so how do we take the information that people said, hey, this is what we should be prioritizing, and work it into those things? I know we have had some upgrades in some of those places, but if that's where folks are saying they want to see their dollars spent, how do we ensure that in our capital or facilities master plan that we're allocating each year with that $8 million, that we're doing some of those things, and people start to see some of those smaller things that we can do? So that was kind of my thought there. And then I just wanted to circle back to the thought exchange around the technology pieces. There are, in those responses for Other, there are comments such as TVs in every high school classroom, and so I heard the conversation earlier, but it, within here, there's indiscrep, there are discrepancies, and so what I'm hearing is different than what folks are saying.
Right, so there are Apple TVs, the little device, so you can connect it in every classroom, but there are not monitors. So some people, some classes have projectors.
Yes, I'm confused when you say that. What's an Apple TV versus?
It's a little square black box that allows you to connect from your MacBook to project, so if there's.
But what are you projecting onto?
So, like, you know, in the room last night, where the projector, on the back wall, there was no screen or TV, it was just on the wall, that was coming from a projector in the ceiling, projecting onto the wall. So there's not a TV monitor there.
Yeah.
It's just a, like, in ceiling, like a movie projector, so you just need a solid surface.
In that room down the hallway?
Yeah.
That's what you're saying, that's what an Apple TV to a projector is?
Right, so they were both in that room.
So what people are saying they want is an actual monitor.
Monitor, because you can do different things with a monitor versus a projector, like, it's limitations, and Rashid, if I'm speaking out of turn, tell me.
Okay.
They have different functionality, functionality.
That helps me clarify those, because that came up multiple times in this, and so then it makes me wonder if those technology upgrades that we're having, if people are saying they need a TV for whatever limitations, I don't personally know what that is between this and that, but that may be something that we consider or look at as we continue.
But I think you need to go and visit the classrooms, and you'll see how they're using the projectors and the monitors together. It does work. It does allow them to do other.
Classroom that has all three of them? Is that what you're saying?
Well, from the classrooms that I went to at Quandero and Bertram Carruthers, they had the projector, they had the teacher hooked it up, and everything on this went to the screen, and the kids were able to use it, and they did a lot of good things with it.
That's a smart, that's a smart board.
No, I'm saying the functionality of those things, yes, they can do that, and they're in there, but they can't do what somebody can do with a TV. It's different functionalities, different technology, the bulbs and things burn, like, there, it's just, the people who are putting it, there are differences, and I don't, you know, the people who put it in there are seeing the functional differences, and without getting way into the weeds, they are, yes, they can, it is a, it has worked, but is very different than if you have, like, up-to-date devices. There are different things that you can do with the monitor versus that. That's what I, when I read it, that's what I was gathering, and that's the feedback that we hear firsthand from staff as well, when you talk to them about different things, like, so.
Mr. Lopez, I would also like to piggyback on that to the extent to say, and I think we've been given it, Dr. Stubblefield, but what, what, what is the schedule for upgrades this year? I think you've already given us, haven't you? Like, with, with, with some of the deferred maintenance items, some of those items that are in the Other, to use, as she said, capital outlay money, haven't, haven't we been given a, kind of an up? To use, as she said, capital outlay money, haven't, haven't we been given a, kind of an up, a schedule of what?
Not for the upcoming year, we gave a, a schedule, I think, in '23, the fall of '23, what is this, '24? We may have given one in the fall of, or spring, uh, spring, fall of, the start of the year for the '22, '23 school year. I don't recall if we did one.
So I, I would say that's, that would, in my opinion, piggyback on exactly what you're saying, that.
Correct me if I'm wrong, is it the five-year capital outlay?
That's the last thing that I recall.
And that's what you're referencing?
Yeah.
Okay, and those projects stay?
They are adjusted.
Have they been started or?
Some of them have, but some things had to be paused. So for example, when we had the situation in New Chelsea recently, the situation at Frank, not Frank, Fisk, when we had the heat situation, so some things are happening, like Stony Point South, I think this summer had floors. Like, there's stuff happening, you've been approving stuff, those things around deferred maintenance are happening. But I, just like, if we went back and looked at it and you were like, well, what about this, this, and this? Some things had to be prioritized based off of those things. And then, so that's what I'll say about that, but we can provide an update, but.
That goes along with what she's suggesting, that if it's, you've asked for a new planter and we've put in a new planter, then that needs to be checked off the list or put it on the list.
Correct, and so the list that we, for bond purposes, was based off of the list that came from the facility's master plan. But that does not take away just the day-to-day maintenance of the things that need to happen from the roofs and the air conditionings and all those things that you approve on a regular basis. So that's, is how honestly, the deferred maintenance is not, I just want to give a point of clarification, because one of the comments was like, we should never have deferred maintenance. The deferred maintenance is not due to stat, a lack of planning or just ignoring stuff. The deferred maintenance is because currently the eight million, eight mills has to be spread across the district and you also have to be able to address those things that come up that you're not planning for. So it's a combination of just natural wear and tear and then prioritizing emergencies.
And then just a generic question, did we not address all HVAC with COVID money?
Doug, I'm looking at you, if you want to come and talk about the.
Doug, we're looking at you.
Because I know we did address it, but I don't want to misspeak, so I'll let Doug.
I know we did a lot of HVAC.
Yes, yes.
Sorry, not much to look at, but yes, we did address a lot of HVAC. I can't say we did every one of them, but we did a lot of HVAC improvements using the Asr funds. I, I don't have that list for you, but absolutely, yes.
I mean, so when, when they have comments in here, it's like, how did we miss one of those?
In some cases, it's not that we missed it, there were updates and improvements and, and.
Just went out.
You just also have to remember, like, the technology for HVACs and those kind of things and some of the ages of our building. Like, it's not necessarily congruent, so while we may have put in a new system, I think a prime example, why I don't want to give an example. But last year, when we had the extreme heat, buildings who had challenges had new, some of them had new HVAC systems. And it had more to do with, like, the age of the building and where the vents were and those rented. So some people may be putting those things and the building could have a brand-new system, but structurally, it's not meeting the needs just because of some other challenges. So it's a combination of these, yeah.
Okay.
Well said.
Thank you.
There's no questions on the Thought Exchange, anything specific around the bond? Ms. Russell?
I just wanted to, we had a discussion about the in-person meeting and I wanted to make sure before we move on that.
Good.
As of right now, August 1st is when the survey closes. Are we wanting it to go, are we wanting to give direction to the staff for it to go longer? Or are we good with it ending tomorrow? I just wanted to make sure that was wrapped up in the conversation. I could go either way, I'm asking for it to close at least one week before our 13th meeting, but it.
What's that date?
August 6th.
Thank you.
August 6th?
Yeah, and I would say, just glancing at my calendar, but I need to get with staff, the meeting more than likely will be August 8th or, probably not the 6th, but probably August 8th. August 8th or 6th, I would avoid Wednesdays, because I know Wednesday is a church night for a lot of people, so it would either be the.
6th is Election Day, so that is not.
Okay, so there you go.
8th is your convocation.
It's in the morning, we would have it in, that, that would be the only.
Yep.
Makes it a long day for you. Does make it a long day, but that would be.
I'd be okay with. The bond passed, let's do what we need to do. And sometimes you have to take that time.
No, I'm just saying, if you, if you are making a decision about extending the survey, if you are wondering where the meeting would land, the 6th isn't Election Day, the 8th would probably be the only option next week.
Okay, do you want to motion, Ms. Russell?
I was going to.
Okay.
So I will make the motion that we extend the survey until Friday, August 9th at noon. And correct, that's my motion, then I'll say my other.
Second, moved and seconded, is there?
I'll do a substitute motion, close of business, 5. I need a second.
There are no second, so we will, it is seconded. Further discussion, Ms. Russell?
So the reason I made it noon was because that would, I felt as though that would give the staff time to get the results and information to us prior to the 13th meeting. If we go till 5 o'clock, that would mean that we would be having the expectation, or maybe not the expectation that they will get the information to us on Monday. And we've had lots of conversations about just having enough time to review the data. And so I know we would have seen some of the preliminary data now, but I want to make sure that we don't feel rushed if we get the information on Monday, that we didn't have time to review the data.
What is your motion for, the data from the online survey?
The motion is currently for the survey.
Online survey?
Yes.
It does not, and correct me if I'm wrong, it does not take long to update that information.
I would need someone else to answer that.
Here's what I will explain, it does not, but if it closes at the close of business day at 5, somebody actually has to go and do it, export it, and do those things to.
And they did it 8 o'clock, 10, 10 o'clock Monday morning, we would get it by noon.
If that is enough time for you to review it, that, I think that's what Ms.
This is the online, you've got five questions or whatever.
To your point, Ms. Russell, you're saying that usually the board gets the information by Friday, before the end of the day, Friday for the board meeting.
So I, yes, and I will support the 5 o'clock, but I am strongly saying, on Tuesday, August 13th, I don't want to hear someone say, we just got this data on Monday at this time, because that is the rebuttal that I oftentimes hear, even from myself, because I do work a job. I don't like getting information at the last minute, and so I just want us to be consistent, that if we're agreeing to receive this information at the last, meaning the argument cannot be, we just got the survey data Monday morning, so.
I don't mean any harm, but often we get stuff late. So this wouldn't be anything different, and I mean no disrespect to anyone.
I'm not dis, I don't feel disrespected.
I'll give you one, I mean no disrespect, but I know you've got your motion already written, so you're not, don't worry that you.
My opinion isn't going to change either way, but I'm just saying, as a board, this has been a conversation, so.
And.
I just wanted to honor and respect that conversation, because regardless of what we're talking about, people have said, when they get things late, I don't want to be rushed to make a decision, and so.
So let the record reflect, as Mr. Lopez says, if we expect data on Friday, then if it doesn't get to us on Friday, it is not dealt with at the meeting.
Okay.
There's a substitute motion and a second on the floor, any further discussion on that?
Did you support 5 or did you object to 5?
Are you, are you asking me for my vote?
No, I'm not asking for a vote, I'm saying, did your comments, you said you didn't object.
Yeah.
So just, I mean, you can vote no, I mean, yes or no, not asking.
It's just funny.
I withdraw the question.
We're in a border, no?
We're in a border.
So we'll go back to the motion, the substitute motion that's on the floor, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
So just for clarity, to receive the update by Friday, August 9th at 5:00 PM?
No, I believe that the survey would close by, the substitute motion is that the survey will close end of day, 5:00 PM on Friday.
The online survey.
Yes, correct, the online survey.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.?
Mylan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
No, no, just joking, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you. Right, since there was an original motion, but this motion, we don't have to do anything for that motion, correct?
The motion passed.
Thank you, okay. Any other conversation on the Thought Exchange update, the bond update that's on the floor currently?
There needs to be some information as far as if you have an in-person meeting, how are you going to collect the data? Is it a paper that each person, are we going to have the computers? How are you going to gather the information? I don't, unless you, you're clear.
I mean, I would, I would lean on staff to figure out, I think, having options of both technology and.
So here's, here's what, I think Ms. Russell's point is, historically, for in-person meetings, we do not have a no-taker, we do not have anybody taking the minutes to report back to you all. What we have done, and you've been there in the space, so we can do similar what we did last night and we can make sure that people have assistance, but if somebody, if the option is to write it down, that is where I think she was saying, somebody will have to enter it, because that, that, I think, we can have the meeting, I'm not sure who can be there, but I cannot guarantee, like, like the other meetings, that we'll have a staff person available to enter the data at each table or those kind of things, because this one is a quicker turnaround, we can definitely have assistance. So we may, you probably would want to have somebody there gathering the minutes, because typically in those spaces, people are not, multiple people are not talking at the same time, right? Like, but somebody can jot down their general information and then if you want it in a separate thing, that turnaround time is not as quick as the other. If you think about it, when we had it, you normally got it a few weeks after that. And that's just the reality based off of previous meetings, unless you have somebody live doing it at that time. So technology-wise, we can provide the technology, we can make sure that we walk through, like, last night, we did pull it up so that people can access it, they just needed to type in the response, we didn't have them. There were some people who used the QR code. If we went to the site for them or helped them to get there, but they would have, their responsibility was to type in what they were saying. We can correct that, not correct it, but make sure that they understand if you don't capture it here, it won't be captured. And provide a supportive, they are warning something written, somebody's going to actually, if you want it in the same document, somebody's going to have to enter it there, if you want it in a separate document, somebody needs to create the separate document to gather it and then you would not have that data Monday by noon, the handwritten data, unless somebody was doing it over the weekend. So I would.
Make sure that it's clear at the beginning of that meeting, because I don't think that was clear, that's just my interpretation.
Okay, I, I mean, I respect that, I'm just saying, we can make sure it's clear, we can make sure that there are, we, what we have available is about 24 devices that we use, like, for our own boarding, so we can share those devices. A lot of people didn't use the devices yesterday, they used their smartphones for the, most of the people did it, used their smartphones. That part we can correct and take care of. The question is, where is that data going? Because if we're keeping it separate from the online survey, because what you'll have, that's why we had a separate survey yesterday. Several people said, I already did the survey, I'm not doing that one, so they didn't want, they, like, I've already given my thoughts. So one, if they're using the same device, they won't be able to re-enter this survey. And then two, if it's people who've never done it, do you want it there? Or do, that's, I think that's where we need clarity at, because then we can talk about who needs to do what. I'm sorry if you didn't understand.
But if we, you really want the community support, those who do come, we need to get their information.
So I'm making, and I don't want to make it a motion, but if the board makes an in-expectation or is in agreement that we make an in-expectation that our board clerk is present at this meeting and takes minutes on behalf of the board, or, you know, takes thoughts, and then she gets it to us Monday morning by noon.
And, but, but some way, and it's not rocket science, to capture the consensus of those at that meeting. So when that meeting ends at 5:30, I don't know, is it a raise of hands, a piece of paper put in a box? I don't know, but you will know when you leave that meeting.
Where people are.
Exactly.
Yes, and I think that's something that our board clerk can do.
It has to be clear at the beginning, and, and it may not be clearly for us to decide today, yet it has to be pretty soon. So what's a smirk supposed to?
It's not a smirk, it is just the reality of, in every space that I've been in, even the votes, even though the noes outweighed it, there was no consensus, people were where they were.
I wasn't calling a consensus, I'm saying, but.
Yeah, it was just, it was split, so if that's the case.
Then we come back on Monday knowing that it was split.
Yeah.
But you, but you made the effort, that's, I mean, we are, we are making sausage here.
Yeah.
Fine, but you made the effort to hear from the community and, and Mylan, I don't care if it's the 15th meeting of the 15th day, you, I'm not going to single you out, I'm sorry for doing that, delete, delete, delete. But still, you made the effort.
No.
You can't say you didn't.
Right, and I agree with you, but when you said consensus, I was like, mm, yeah.
Wrong word.
Yeah, no, but I.
Listening to her too long.
Yeah, so I just, I wanted clarity around that, like, where, like, I shared at the beginning of this meeting, the room was split. Like, there, there was people who felt strongly that we should move forward, and last night, there were people who felt strongly that absolutely not. And then there were people who said, if it's no, like, that, that was the, the, the fill of the room yesterday. So I, we can definitely say, here's the fill, like, we can do a thumbs up, thumbs, like, we can do things so that you will have an accurate account of the number of people who were present and accurate, like, in a breakdown of where it fell, where people are, yeah.
Thank you all. If there's no further conversation on this Thought Exchange bond topic, we will continue on with our agenda, item number five. There are motions to recess to executive session to discuss the board clerk evaluation pursuant to the non-elected personnel exemption to Tacoma, to include Mr. Goheen and Ms. Smith for, we'll start with 15 minutes, going in at 2:59. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, questions or discussion?
Is 15 minutes enough time? I'm, I know we got 30 minutes, and we say 30 to make sure we get everything done for clarity.
I wanted to start, we can, but if we were to finish early, we wouldn't be able to end until those 30 minutes were done, not to say that we would, but I just thought we could start with 15, and then if we need to extend, we can extend.
I just want to make sure we use that 30 minutes wisely, and hopefully resolve all issues.
I agree with that, too.
Yeah.
You can't be rushed.
Do you all want to make a...
Friendly amendment?
A friendly amendment to your motion to 30 minutes?
Sure.
No, I, I mean, we can, I'm just saying, make sure we got 30, if we need the extra time, let's not just rush to get through.
Okay, so 30 minutes?
30 minutes.
Okay, 30 minutes, it's, there's a motion, a second, further discussion?
Second.
Okay, hearing no further discussion, Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy, yes.
Robert Mylan Jr.?
Mylan Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yes.
Yolanda.
And Yolanda dropped off at 3:30.
Thank you. Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yes. Yolanda.
And Yolanda dropped off at 3:30.
Thank you. Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.?
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
So, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
I'll move.
Moved by Ms. Russell, seconded by Ms. Brownlee Page. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.?
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to return to open session, please?
So, seconded.
Moved and seconded questions. Ms. Smith?
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy, yes.
Robert Marlin Jr.?
Robert Marlin Jr., yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen? Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Back in open session. Thank you, Board. Thank you, Dr. Stufeld and staff. With that, this meeting is adjourned. Thanks.
Thank you.